Hi, everyone. Welcome to Town Hall. My name is Pam Friedman, and I'm the Managing Director and Principal of Robertson Stevens Wealth Management. But more importantly, I am a Class of 2015 Impact Austin member. My journey to finding Impact Austin, I'd been a lifelong investor and intentional about investing and always knew that I wanted to support my community. But I didn't know how. And so my journey included Impact Austin and Women's Collective Giving. And through Impact Austin, I've learned so much about the needs of our community and really honed in on the interests that I had. In particular, I found Friends of the Children Austin and really appreciate what they're trying to do for our community in supporting children through elementary school, junior high, and high school. Years ago, one of our founders, Rebecca Powers, invited me to breakfast. And she said, you know, Pam, we don't have a sponsor for Town Hall. Would you have an interest? And I said, of course, what do you need? And so I've been the title sponsor for Town Hall, and it's one of the lights of my year to be able to do this. I've worked hard in my career so that I could get to the point that I could be the sponsor of this event. It's so important for all of us to learn about the needs of our community and the charitable organizations that are trying to help, especially in these times through the pandemic when needs are even greater. So hopefully, one day, we all get to do this in person together. But for now, enjoy today's event, and I look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pam, and thank you so much to all of you for joining. I'm Christina Canales-Gorchinsky, the Executive Director of Impact Austin, and I'm here to welcome you to Impact Austin's 2020 Town Hall meeting. Impact Austin is a women's collective giving organization based in central Texas, and we welcome all women with a desire to give back and make an impact, whether you are new to Austin, have lived here for years, a beginner in philanthropy, or well-versed in collective giving. We meet you wherever you are on your philanthropic journey, and we travel together to make a huge impact. I thank you all so much for your contributions, both big and small, to central Texas-area nonprofits. Our theme for this evening is embracing trust-based philanthropy. And tonight, we'll hear from national experts on trust-based philanthropy, and we hope to build trust-based philanthropy champions in all of our members, our local funding partners, and beyond. Tonight, we celebrate women's philanthropy and high-impact grant-making by awarding our 2020 Social Innovation Grant to a collaborative working to advance equity for women and girls of color in central Texas. So what is collective giving? Collective giving is a form of shared giving and meaningful social networking. Impact Austin members pool individual charitable contributions and decide collectively how to award strategic high-impact grants. Members also engage in volunteering together, philanthropy education webinars and opportunities, and networking at meetings and social events. As of November 2020, Impact Austin has awarded $7.44 million in the form of 94 high-impact grants serving 69 organizations. Over our 17 years of collective grant-making, we've trained and engaged 2,222 women philanthropists. And what a year our 17th year has been. 2020 is definitely one for the books, a year of so much loss and generosity, unexpected joy and positivity, along with collective grief. This will this will always be the year that we were closest while being apart. A year of virtual Impact Austin committee meetings, volunteer engagement activities with community partners, Zoom trivia night, social distancing hangs, virtual annual meeting, finding creative ways to hang out via Zoom, including wine tasting, chocolate tasting, cheese tasting, honey tasting, all online and all with your Impact Austin friends. This time last year, I did not even know what a Zoom background was or how to produce a virtual event, and here we are. This time last year, we were all together, packed into a sold-out theater at Austin Film Society to award the first Social Innovation Grant to the Innocence Initiative. When I looked at the pictures earlier today while preparing for tonight, I felt the energy and excitement that was present there that night. And tonight, we'll hear an update from Mimi Stiles, Executive Director of Measure, later in the program. And she'll be making the big announcement of the voting results of this year's $40,000 Social Innovation Grant. We'll get to hear live from our new community partner, so stay tuned. I have a couple of other special announcements later in the program, including volunteer awards, updates to membership practices, and upcoming events. And one big other big announcement to make this evening is that Simone Tama Flowers is joining the Impact Austin Board. I am honored to welcome to the Impact Austin Board Simone Tama Flowers, who is a Class of 2018. Simone recently said that as a nonprofit leader, "I love being an Impact Austin member, working on the other side of the funding pipeline and wearing another hat of philanthropist. I love that my one vote is just as important as anyone else's in awarding grants." Thank you so much to Simone for your leadership, and welcome to the Impact Austin Board of Directors. This was a year that many of us feel so distant and divided, and Impact Austin members continue to come together collectively because we are in this together. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Our evening was made possible by our event co-chair Lauren Lewis and Deanna Dehaven, the team at C2C Media, for the incredible video work. And a quick thank you again to our Town Hall sponsors, Robertson Stevens, C2C Media, Dochin Realtors, Enoch Peever, Google Fiber, Bank of America, and our amazing board president Susan Palumbo and her husband John. And I now have the pleasure of introducing Mitra Khathari, who will introduce our panelists. Mitra is the Managing Director of Sustainability and Social Innovation at Macomb School of Business at UT. Mitra is also an Impact Austin member, Class of 2004, and is one of the first five Impact Austin members I met when I moved here. And highly relevant to this evening, Mitra was the one who planted the seed for the Social Innovation Grant with our founder Rebecca Powers back in 2018. So welcome, Mitra. We look forward to this thought-provoking panel of some female philanthropy rock stars. Thank you so much for moderating.
Thank you, Christina, and thank you for your leadership. Impact Austin is in such great hands. It's lovely to be able to sit back and watch and join in for some fun once in a while. I have so much to ask our panelists today, so I will not spend a whole lot of time, but would like to introduce you just a little bit to our panelists. First of all, Dimple Abichandani is the Executive Director of the General Services Foundation. Dimple is is an advocate, is a relationship broker and funder, educator, and wears many hats in her role as a social justice promoter. She is one of the women blazing new trails through her work in trust-based philanthropy. I have to say that Dimple has some Texas roots, Austin roots, I should say. She is a graduate of UT Austin, after which she left us to go to other schools and other parts of the country. Pia Infante is the the Co-Executive Director of the Whitman Institute and another champion of the trust-based philanthropy ideas. She is actually on the Steering Committee. She's the Chair of the Steering Committee of the Trust-Based Philanthropy Project, which is an ambitious project to rewrite philanthropy for the 21st century. Pia is, again, nationally recognized for her work, just like Dimple is, but she brings multiple talents to her work, including being a schoolteacher, an organizational development consultant, a nonprofit manager, and just a real believer in our collective imagination and our power to redesign philanthropy through relationships to center the people we serve. And while I have seen many changes in Impact Austin over the many years that I've been a member, there is one thing about Impact Austin that never changes, and that is that we are a learning organization. And in that spirit, I am honored to welcome two women who are learning, growing, and teaching and spreading ideas that are so important for philanthropy, especially given the time we are in. So without further ado, I'm going to pose my first question to Pia. Pia, tell us a little bit about trust-based philanthropy. What is that? You are on mute, Pia.
Ah, thank you, Mitra. Good evening, everyone. It's quite an honor to be here. And this is a great question to start with. As I was watching and listening to the introduction, it occurred to me that the roots of trust-based philanthropy are very similar to your roots in collective giving, sort of the demo principles, right, of being in collaboration and partnership. And I think essentially, one of trust-based philanthropy's purposes is to reimagine a culture of giving in philanthropy, where we see our partners not as what is it? Not as sort of charity cases for us to fix, but actually partners and collaborators in the social innovations that we really require in this century, whether we're talking about education, or economy, or climate, or government. So I think essentially, that's what it is. There are some core principles you can see on, you know, in the materials, which have to do with like multi-year, long-term funding, sort of not having a lot of bureaucratic technicalities between the giver and the receivers, and really, I think essentially partnering in a spirit of service. So that's, you know, I wanted to give you a really succinct answer so we could get some of the gist of it, but I think I'll stop there and maybe, and let Dimple into the conversation.
Thank you so much, Pia. Dimple, may I ask you the same question? Just to elaborate on how you see trust-based philanthropy, both from the perspective of your organization and from your past experience?
Sure. So thank you, Mitra, and thanks to Impact Austin. You know, I will just say, we all spend so much time on Zoom these days, but this call, I really feel like we're all together. So I can feel the power of this collective and of all these women who are working together to make Austin a better place, and it's inspiring. So to answer kind of that question about trust-based philanthropy, I'll just quickly give some context about the General Service Foundation. So we are a family foundation that's been around for 73 years. And our mission is to fund work that will ensure that everyone can thrive and everyone belongs. So we see ourselves as really funding justice work. And trust-based philanthropy for us is an expression of our values. It's an expression of our beliefs. So we have a value around partnership and a deep desire to be in partnership with those that we support. And so trust-based philanthropy, it kind of reflects that partnership for us. We believe that the people who are best positioned to make change are those that are impacted by the problems that they're trying to solve. We think that the wisdom and the leadership should come from those who are most impacted. And so trust-based philanthropy for us is about centering the grantees, centering those who are most impacted, and not sort of substituting kind of our own sense from sort of far away in our foundation about the work.
That's wonderful. Talking about partnerships, so let's dig into that a little bit. What does, what does it mean to partner with a grantee, a grant partner, when you are trust-based philanthropist? Because essentially, you are always the person with power at some level because it is up to you to decide whether this partnership happens or not. How do you see, what exactly do you do? Let's start at the beginning, Pia, and talk about what that would look like in grant-making.
Yeah. And I think it expresses itself differently in different mediums. So I can speak to our foundation, which is the Whitman Institute. We are spending out by the end of 2021. And we think of ourselves as a proactive grantmaker and in terms of the areas that we fund. So we fund, we have funded in civic engagement and some human rights and journalism. So knowing the areas that we want to have some impact in or some collaboration in, we are proactive in terms of seeking out partners, meaning we don't actually have an open application process because we don't have the staff robustness to review thousands of applications. It may look like equity to say, we have an open application process, but because we fund nationally, we know that that would be a waste of time for a lot of folks to fill out an application that we already know from the outset, we couldn't meet the demand. So we examined our grant-making, and we brought a few lenses at the front of it. And one is that we know that less than 3% of all funding goes to Black, Indigenous, and Latino leaders of organizations. So while organizations may be serving those populations, we look specifically at who's in executive leadership and also who are on the boards of the organizations. Because again, we're looking at power. So if, so if that's a front lens, we hold that. And we hold, we also held for ourselves, we were looking for organizations with budgets of $1 million or less. And so we would proactively find partners through publicly-held information. So our due diligence was on our side. It's called "we do the homework." So we take on that work instead of having our burnt-out, stressed-out nonprofit partners who are doing a million things have to take on that burden and prove their sort of proof of concept to us. So already, you can hear the power dynamic shifting in that kind of process, right? There's already a sensibility that we understand and empathize with the conundrums of being, say, a youth development or a journalism organization in the time of COVID, in the time like 2020 that had multiple pandemics of economy and politics and global health all at once. So we do that, and then we approach partners. And by the time we've approached a partner for a conversation, we're about 90% sure we're likely to fund them. The last 10% has to do with our experiential understanding, if we have shared values, going back to Dimple's point. Do we share values around the most important things, around equity, around humility, around listening to feedback of our constituents, feeling, having accountability to those communities? Do we share those values? And I think also a characteristic we often look for and that we could probably find in some of the winners of your awards is real humility and not these personality and charisma-driven outfits, but really a humility around leadership. And going back again to partnership and collaboration, leaders who are essentially facilitative leaders. At the heart of them, they're servant leaders. They're leaders who lift up everyone around them, right? So we seek that kind of leadership. So that already sounds pretty different. And I know it looks different in different contexts, but that's just a little window into our proactive grant-making, and we call that "do the homework" for the Whitman Institute. And then just take it a few steps further, then we're now in a relationship that we think of as a relationship of learning, not a relationship of proof, right? So meaning, we're in the relationship not to chalk up some metrics of impact on a report card and tally them and use that tally to then support some claims of our own impact or grade a potential partner for further funding. We're in a relationship of learning, and things that we'll learn are, what does it take to really create the change? Or trying to see, what are they learning? How are they failing? How can we support them? And through that relationship, we start to see, is this, does this look like a long-term relationship? It's a little bit like dating, but for many foundations, you have to date them and never get a scent. I think for us, you know, we have this sort of dating period in the first year or two of our connection. And then we start to see, is there synergy here? Are we trying to advance the same things in the world? And if so, then, then, then they could become likely. And for us, we had a limited, you know, budget size. So there were 15 for us, but long-term or multi-year partners. So because we had the front-ending, the front-end lenses around equity, we don't, we don't end up in the boat of some critiques could be, well, maybe you're just picking favorites or it's just people already know, already like. We in fact sign legal agreements that we will never, you know, offer to fund friends or family members or organizations that we have deep relationships with already. So we're, we try to solve for some of the sort of normal issues around due diligence and good fit with a real acknowledgement that we have the time and capacity often where nonprofits don't. And I often argue that, wouldn't we rather spend the time in relationship conversation and learning rather than behind our laptops, reading proposals and reports? Like, isn't that a more appealing way anyway to live into the human dimension that we're all attracted to in this work?
So before I go to Dimple, I want to pursue one question. When you said you do your due diligence, you do 90% of the work yourself. Do you think about it from the perspective of your staff? What are your lived experiences? And how do you put that team together for the due diligence?
I feel like you're also asking if we're looking at our own implicit biases, which is a great question. You know, we, we have a really limited staff size. So that's why we, we have, one of the things we did when I became the Co-Executive Director six years ago is we transitioned our board to one that is very diverse so that our eyes and ears and senses and networks are all really diverse. And they're diverse in a lot of ways, you know, gender, race, experience, education. So we have folks who work in tech, you know, folks who work in documentary filmmaking, folks who work in more traditional humanities, folks who run foundations. So there's something around the, and this maybe speaks to the giving circle, set of eyes when looking at applications. We have really diversified the set of eyes that refer in and that review. And also, you know, John and I are the co-EDs, and we, between us, you know, represent a bunch of different demographics, you know, in that way as well. So I think we, we have the limitations that we have in terms of our size, but we are, we are cognizant and conscious of things like implicit bias and things. Like, just one little story is when I first became co-ED, we realized that 70% of the nonprofits we were funding were led by white women. And John, that was, you know, he's a lovely white man, feminist white man, and he didn't even see that, you know, that it was for him, it's like, he really was happy to fund women, which we always are, but he didn't have a second lens on that. So again, just even bringing me into the picture really helped us to see that.
Yeah, yeah, no. And I, it was really, you know, given how much deep experience you have, John has, it's totally a different story between different foundations. But there is that issue of how do we do this? Well, even as we are bringing grant partners into the process and reducing the burden on them. So to you, Dimple, how do you see this? And how far has your homework gone on your end?
Yeah.
To reduce the burden on your grant partners?
So Mitra, I heard you say before Pia's question that, you know, you referred to the power imbalance that exists between grantees and their funders. And, you know, it absolutely does. And I guess what I would say is, for us, we, we use trust-based approaches because we urgently want our grantees to be powerful. And so in the context of that power imbalance, we're intentional about not wanting to hoard additional power. And so concretely, what that looks like is things like having our default grant be a general operating support grant as opposed to a project support grant. So when we give a general operating support grant, we're actually giving our grantees the power to decide how and when they use those funds, right? And we have all just sort of lived through a year that has had multiple crises that none of us could have foreseen, right? But traditional philanthropic practice, you know, essentially requires grantees to come in the door and present a sort of their, you know, their magic ball where they've looked into the future and said, here's everything that's going to happen next year, and here's what we're going to do. And then what happens is, when those conditions change, then the grantees are calling us again, right? And they're having to say, well, you know, there's a pandemic now, and we can't do this conference that we said we were going to do, or whatever the situation is. Those are all the ways in which project grants are kind of limiting the power that grantees have, right? Whereas when we give general flexible support, we're saying, we trust you, which is super important. But more than that, we're actually giving them the power to move in ways that they need to, to lead their communities in the way that they need to. Another example like this is giving grant, giving our grantees a runway. So when I got to the General Service Foundation, a large percentage of our grants were actually one-year grants. One-year grants are a tremendous amount of work, not just for us as funders, but more importantly, for our grantees, right? They're having to come back every year and ask us for funding and having to sort of go through the cycle of proving their expertise and their worth every year. And so what we have moved towards is defaulting towards two-to-three-year grants, which gives grantees this longer runway. And when I think about the power that that gives them, it gives them the power to imagine more long-term change and actually move towards it because they don't have to kind of break everything down into like what can be accomplished in a year. So those are, I think, those two pieces of general operating flexible support, long-term support. Those are two that I think both Pia and I would love to see be the norm because they concretely shift what our grantees are able to do.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So before I run, ask my other couple of questions, I'd like to invite the audience to propose questions, and I believe Nicole is keeping track of them. I'd love to take those to our wonderful guests here. Doesn't have to be me just asking the questions, but I have tons of questions if no one else wants to ask them. I think, you know, one, it's partnerships, stepping out of your networks, giving multi-year grants, doing the homework yourselves. From a collective giving perspective, we do have that massive talent and the diverse perspectives. But on the other hand, keeping the thrill of giving a grant is also something that we try to work with because our members want to be involved. And how do you, how do you think about this? Let's say, we want, we wanted to tell a new member they should really get excited about this. And we're doing multi-year grants, and we're doing operating grants. What would, how would you frame this conversation? I know this is a very tough question.
Yeah.
And, but you know, what, what are some of the things that excite you perhaps about this? And maybe excite you when you talk to others? Because I know both of you are huge advocates of trust-based, and you are doing this all the time with your own organizations and leading it outside. What is the story we tell people with trust-based philanthropy?
So I mean, one, I, to me, one thing that's exciting is, I think trust-based philanthropy invites us to sort of reckon with, what is the right role of the philanthropist in the social change world? Right? And that, I think that is, that is something that's shifting. So I think a kind of more traditional approach to philanthropy said that, you know, the right role of the funder or the philanthropist who's part of the giving circle is that they are the ones with expertise, that they are the ones who are setting a strategy. And then the grantees are kind of the ones that they contract out to, to implement the strategy. Right? And so in that way, you can see how much power sits with the funder. To me, what's so exciting is to, is to kind of start really questioning that and, and to say that the role of the funder or the, you know, the person who's doing the giving is to learn and to listen to those who are actually on the ground doing the work. So there's still a really exciting role. Like, when you talked about the thrill of grant-making, I think, you know, Pia and I both experienced that in our, in our jobs all the time. But the thrill comes from the quality of the relationships that we have an opportunity to build. And it's, it's the, it's the learning, it's the partnership, it's the being of service. That's a thrill and not necessarily the kind of exercising the power of the purse.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And can I add to that? And I see a couple of questions, I'll try to tackle one. So I would also say that the thrill of the award is a little bit of a construct that we create, right? These folks are going to do their incredible work with women and girls or whatever their focus is. These folks are going to do their incredible work with women and girls or whatever their focus is. They're going to do that. They're going to have highs and lows. They're going to have to pivot during really difficult times like COVID. So their work is already pretty thrilling, you know? So we create kind of another structure, and then the thrill is then for us to feel good about helping them. So I think trust-based philanthropy sort of proposes, what if we didn't have to create this other structure to be passionate and excited about change work? You know, what if we had such a deep relationship, which which I know that Dimple and I do with our partners, that they call us when hard news comes down the line. They call us and they say, we didn't get that big grant from Ford. You know, I feel really burnt out today as a mom, as a, you know, as a nonprofit executive, as a development, have to be the development director at the same time. So for us, I think the I have a thrill around the the learning, because I I do not run an entity on the ground. Like, I'll give you an example. We have a a grantee partner in Napa Valley, and they normally do incredible work with foster youth, creating their own kind of social innovation vehicles. Every time a major fire comes through Santa Rosa, which now happens every other year, they go from doing that kind of incredible, high-quality, you know, kind of young, young adults programming and turn immediately to being kind of a center for all of these undocumented workers who are now homeless, really nervous about housing security and job security and don't trust the county to not deport them when they go in to get fire services. So if we didn't give them this kind of funding, that our this nonprofit partner of ours would be worried that they weren't meeting our metric goals for youth development, when they're literally getting flooded with homeless families of migrant workers who need direct help translating the services that the county is trying to provide, but there's a lot of culture and language barriers. They serve as the actual translator and interloper for county and federal services for, you know, a climate chaos. So to me, that the helping them be able to do that and then hearing what it means to the staff to have been able to do that, and then hearing from the families afterwards about what it meant that they could go to this safe place to figure themselves out for the next few months as they re reimagine their whole lives. That's, to me, that that has a different kind of thrill than like, yay, yes, I get to give an award. Not not to discount that I love, I want to be helpful. It's it's asking the people that we're helping, how do you want to be helped? And I can guarantee you a million percent of the time, they're not going to say, can you please create another structure for us to compete in to get dollars we need to pay our staff, you know? They're not going to say that. I just want to say, and and Dimple, I really love your idea about what what is the right role of a philanthropist? There was a good question in here is like, how do we apply this to giving circles? You know, giving circles have their own design already. And it's democratic and participatory by design. I think that's a great question that I don't know that I am the best one to answer. I wonder about opening up that question to you and to your awardees and asking into your values in terms of the giving circles. How would you design a trust-based giving circle process? Who would you include in the design process, not just the decisions about where the money goes? I think that's where we're trying to get to with trust-based philanthropy too. We can do inclusive design in a thousand different ways. But if, again, we go back to Dimple's point, the folks at the table are not the ones directly experiencing that issue and directly trying to counteract that in their actual lived experience, whether, you know, on on whatever scale we're talking about and whatever issue we're we're talking about, then we're not getting to shifting the power dynamic. And can I just address one more question? Jerry asked, as wonderful as this sounds, how do you manage accountability? Sadly, there are those who would take advantage. And I think Jerry, I gave you kind of a flippant answer, which is like nonprofits are not the place for con artists. You're just like, it's not a great, you know, go to Las Vegas. But but I I think in in terms of accountability, we have, you know, once we, once we get into that relationship, we don't close our eyes and say, now, all of a sudden, we're not observing and we're not experiencing what's happening. There have been times where we were in a a multi-year relationship with a nonprofit partner and we and we got concerned about how they were doing a leadership transition. Their executive director left. They went into a twelve or fourteen-month process to hire a new ED, and then they ended up appointing the board chair, the executive director, which felt very murky to us around transparency and sort of what happened with like this equitable process for hire. So I think the accountability then gets managed in the same way we might have managed an accountability in a relationship, you know? It's, you know, hey, I just want to ask about this. What was going on behind closed doors there? I just, I'm just curious, you know, like, I want to understand what's happening. So in that instance, we actually decided the next year to part ways because just there's something about that leadership transition that didn't feel values aligned for us. So it's not that trust-based philanthropy is about sort of blindly and and being undiscerning in our relationships. In fact, I say no a lot more than I say yes in trust-based philanthropy, because I don't take calls or meetings or, you know, in the past coffee dates and now Zoom dates. Like letting people think that they have a chance, you know, at getting a grant. I will say right now, we have committed all of our funds because we're spending out. So I I'm just very transparent. And so saying no and the the muscle to say no and the muscle to design our process to be realistic so that there aren't people sort of expecting or hoping for some funds from us that are just not going to get it. I think part of brokering trust from this position of power is realizing that if we're not completely transparent, the opaqueness of our intentions can be misread in about a million different ways, you know? And so I think if anyone wants to call themselves trust-based to their community, they're going to want to be very transparent about what they mean by that. And we don't have a singular answer. As you can tell from me and Dimple's responses, our foundations don't operate exactly the same.
No, absolutely. There are not, there are many good ways of doing great trust-based philanthropy. We are running out of time. Before I let Dimple just end our conversation for now, would you two mind answering some additional questions in chat? Because we can't get them answered here on the panel. Thank you so much. But Dimple, any last thoughts about any advice to our members about what's the work you've had to do to get here? Or or following up on Pia's comments as well?
So I, you know, I guess what I would say as a as a last thought is, you know, our experience at General Service Foundation is is that trust-based philanthropy has at its core, it's allowed us to increase the effectiveness and sustainability of our grantees. And that's one of the reasons that, you know, we are excited to share our experience with others. So it's not, you know, we share it because I feel like it's both made us better grant makers, but it's made our grantees able to do their their work in a way that's that's more supported. So you know, what I would share is like, there are, there are just simple things that donors can do to kind of look at your own practices, look at your own processes and and ask yourselves, you know, are we doing, is is our application process set up this way because this is, you know, how all funders do it? Or is it, is it set up this way because this really helps the effectiveness and sustainability of our grantees? And, you know, for us, asking those questions led to so much change that's been so positive. And that has been so affirmed by our grantees.
You said the other day, best practices just become habits after a while. They need to be looked at.
Yeah, or no, I I said that it's that a lot of the things we think of as philanthropic best practices are really just habits. They're not, it's not that there's like some science there that, you know, a grant application needs to ask eighty-two questions. That's just a habit. It's just what our sector does. But but we can change those habits.
Absolutely. Thank you. Pia wanted to say, I have one more comment here. Okay.
Forgive me, I just have a thirty-second comment. It's been delightful. Thank you, Mita and Dimple. Christine, I want to go back to something you said in the introduction, which is what a year of being apart together. And it made me think of this country and this last election and how sometimes we're so close together and we're so far apart, you know? And I really believe that in order to lean into that dissonance and that tension in this country, right, the the level of the apartness together and and how we all kind of individually and institutionally hold that tension in reality. I think the truth is, we're going to have to be uncomfortable sometimes. And I think what trust-based philanthropy and anything that questions our own individual embodiment of power or our institutional decisions of power, there's going to be some discomfort in examining that and interrogating that and being truthful about that. But I think we believe that if we're able to do that and we're able to do that with a spirit of real service and and compassion and and intention, then we can maybe, we can maybe add to the climate that we'd like to have in this country, which is I don't think we want to be so close together and so far apart, you know? So if we can inch towards a different cultural imagination about how to be, even in our most micro decisions, I think we believe that it is possible to get to a better place together. So, thank you.
Great part to end on. Thank you so much, Pia. Thank you, Dimple. This is a great conversation to proceed what is just about to come. And for that, I'm going to invite Becky Austin to give us an overview of some of the changes we are making to our grant process. So thank you, Pia and Dimple. And Becky, over to you.
Impact Austin's DNA and values for a long time, such as soliciting and acting on feedback from our members and nonprofits and developing longstanding and trusted relationships with our community partners. Some of these principles are newer. We're just beginning to adopt or advance them this year, such as offering more unrestricted or flexible funding and simplifying and streamlining our paperwork. And some of these principles, we need to sit with for a while and really consider what does that mean to impact Austin members and to our community. There are a lot of other forces driving change this year. Obviously, the pandemic, economic downturn, social justice and anti-racism movements are all influencing our grant making for 2021. So with that, let's talk a bit about what's changing next year. We're going to have two grant cycles equally balanced, one in the spring, one in the fall, and two focus areas per cycle. This enables us to pool member funds equally throughout the year. It allows nonprofits more flexibility in terms of when they apply and in which area. All of our focus areas will support programs, capacity building, or both. And either single organizations or collaborative groups may apply. Effectively, we've taken the best of all of our grant types and mashed those up into a single application and process. It also provides more flexibility for nonprofits, so they can choose whether they need to invest more in their infrastructure, in building out programs, or a combination of both to serve their needs. And we clearly saw the power of collaborative applications with the Social Innovation Grant and want to make sure that we allow that for all of our grant programs. This spring, with the pandemic, we had to make some swift and somewhat radical changes in order to respond to what was going on around us. And part of that is that we opted to deliver funds to all of our finalists rather than a single grantee in each focus area. We've decided to carry that forward. The feedback on that was really strong and positive. And so in 2021, we will split each of the grant pools eighty percent to the organization that receives the most votes, and that will fund the proposal that they have put forward, and then twenty percent to the other organization in that category, and that will be an unrestricted grant. These are still high-impact grants, which is again true to our values and our DNA, and at the same time, providing more funding to more organizations around our community. We have significantly streamlined our application and our review processes. Again, some of that was forced by the swift movement we had to make during the pandemic and going virtual. But some of it was just simply, it was time. You don't need to ask twenty-something questions when you can ask six and and get to the essence of an application and its merit. So you'll see quite a bit of that coming forward, and and we even piloted some of those concepts with the Social Innovation Grant and proved that they could work for us. And finally, we are applying a broader equity lens in our grant making. This is again, a journey for us. I will not say that we've solved all of these things in year one or or in past years, but that we have considerably more work to do. But that said, we have changed up our application prompts to be more equitable and inclusive. And we're training our grant review committee members on subjects such as unconscious bias and the history of our community, which shapes a lot of the social issues that show up in our grants. So in summary, you'll see the grants that we're delivering in the spring and the fall for 2021. Of course, we're also delivering our Girls Giving Grant program in the spring of 2021. That's already underway. Our spring program will include applications for educational-related initiatives and for community-related initiatives. And then our fall grants will be around health and well-being and equity, which is effectively the same theme as our current Social Innovation Grant, around advancing equity for women and girls of color. Again, in each of these categories, organizations can apply for programmatic funds, capacity building funds, or both. And they can apply as a single organization or a collaborative. You can learn more at our impactaustin.org grant making site. Talks all about these new changes in our grants. And also learn more about how to get involved as a grant review committee member at the GRC site. With that, we're really excited to move into the Social Innovation Grant selection part of the evening. We want to share with you a bit more about our two finalists. The first collaborative is the Black Mamas Reach Maynor, a collaboration between Black Mamas ATX, Austin Regional Clinic, Maynor ISD, and People's Community Clinic. And our second applicant, the Spark Change Project, which is a collaboration between the Girls Empowerment Network and the Excellence and Advancement Foundation.
Black Mamas ATX is committed to making an impact that will be lasting for Black women and girls in Maynor. Won't you join the movement? My name is Nikania Wilson, and I'm the first full-time executive director of Black Mamas ATX. We are a grassroots organization that is Black women-centered, led, and served, whose mission is to ensure that Black women survive and thrive before, during, and after childbirth.
The WHO states that community-based midwifery care ranks positively in terms of efficiency, effectiveness, and the economy. It's linked to lower C-section rates, reduced rates of induction and augmentation, lower infant mortality and preterm birth rates, and lower cost in general to the to the insurers and to clients. At Black Mamas ATX, our record speaks for itself. We have a C-section rate of twelve percent versus the national average African Americans of thirty-five point three percent. We have a preterm birth rate of four point nine percent versus the nation's sixteen point five percent. We have a low birth weight rate, try saying that ten times fast, of five percent versus the national average African Americans of thirteen point three percent. And our breastfeeding initiation rate is a hundred percent.
The United States leads all civilized countries in maternal deaths a year, and Black women were three to four times more likely to die. Regardless of education and socioeconomic status, the facts exist that doctors are dismissing women's health concerns, specifically Black women. I think it's imperative that we do everything we can to help Black women not just survive during pregnancy and beyond, but to thrive.
Our programs work, and they work because we have the right mix of quality, evidence-based maternal care and cultural alignment.
And we're excited to be able to send our patients that we see at the Maynor Mustang Clinic to Black Mamas as well as the Maynor patients that we see in our other clinics.
Hello, Impact Austin. I am Dr. Crystal Berry Roberts, board certified OB-GYN currently employed with Austin Regional Clinic. I am delighted to have the opportunity to represent Austin Regional Clinic today and communicate our support of Black Mamas ATX. We are a private, multi-specialty physician-owned practice with an administration who has valued the connection between ARC and the community since our inception approximately forty years ago. Our administration was open and eager to brainstorm with Black Mamas Austin about the role our organization can play in the execution of plans devised by BMATX. As a Black physician, a Black mother, a Black wife, and a Black recipient of healthcare myself, I know firsthand the challenges that can face women and girls of color as they try to maneuver the healthcare system. Again, ARC stands in support of Black Mamas Austin and commit to tangible ways to see their outreach be successful in Maynor and other communities where they see our support being an integral part to the underlying success of the population served.
Dr. Larry Wallace Jr., man for the city of Maynor. Only our population is fifty-two percent female and twenty-five percent plus African American. This is one of the unique reasons of why we want to work with Black Mamas ATX and why they want to come and provide services here. I've learned that it's key to have service providers that are the same ethnicity and gender of the population they are serving. For whatever reason it may be, it becomes more impactful because there's more communication that occurs between the client because there's more communication that occurs between the client as well as the service provider. So, for a myriad of reasons, the city of Maynor is looking forward to the opportunity of having Black Mamas ATX provide their unique servicing program to our city.
The most optimal maternal health care happens when Black women are able to receive continuity and reproductive health care during preconception, prenatal, and postpartum periods. By supporting and enhancing medical relationships, Black Mamas Reach Maynor fills important gaps for providing a consistent culturally congruent safety net for Black mothers living in medically underserved communities. Through the Black Mamas Reach Project, we expect our impact to be great and lasting. Investing in improving Black maternal health for Black women in Maynor improves the outcomes for their children and their children's children. And when we improve outcomes for Black women, we improve outcomes for all women. It is my personal belief that it is a basic human right to give birth safely, and that no woman should have to face death in order to bring life into this world.
In this era, some youth voices have been amplified. Who will be next? With your help, they will come from right here in Central Texas, and they will be Black and Brown girls known as the Spark Change Girls. I'm Dr. Courtney Robinson, the founder and CEO of the Excellence and Advancement Foundation. Our organization has a history of disrupting the school-to-prison pipeline and teaching Black and Brown youth how to be activists. But the process of finding your voice when you're a girl of color isn't simple. And that is one of the reasons I'm so excited to collaborate with the Girls Empowerment Network.
At Girls Empowerment Network, we help girls discover that they are powerful by teaching them how to believe in their ability to succeed. And it's not just knowing how to be an activist, but believing you can be an activist that makes our collaboration so dynamic. I'm Adrienne Torres from Girls Empowerment Network, and I'm one of the co-leaders of this project. The Spark Change Project is a platform for Central Texas Black and Brown girls to learn what it takes to testify at the 2023 legislative session.
And so our work at the Excellence and Advancement Foundation is focused on activism and advocacy, both at a local level, in our schools, in our community. So we work closely with policymakers and leaders in the community that come in and help our youth understand what activism really, really looks like.
And so we think that the voices of youth are critically important in diagnosing and more importantly, in inventing solutions to social issues. The advocacy skills we equip girls with now will spark change across their communities and ultimately across Texas as we involve them directly in their policy work.
This is a program led by girls of color for girls of color. Through a week on camp, a day practicing with legislators, town halls, blogs, and social media, these girls will shape a legislative agenda.
The Spark Change Project will teach Black and Brown girls the skills and confidence they need to challenge this harmful notion that gender and racial justice are up for debate. The Sparks Change Girls can help ensure that girls and women in all systems, from education to healthcare, get what they need to live healthy and long lives.
What we realized is that our organizations combined help girls of color build positive racial and gender identities. Through the Excellence and Advancement Foundation, they learn how to be activists, and through Girls Empowerment Network, they learn to believe in their ability to succeed.
Equity and activism is really like the air that we breathe, and we want to ensure that all youth have the opportunity to use their voice and use it in ways that are beneficial to our community. When we give the girls the tools they need, they spark.
Girls are the experts of their lives. We don't have to tell them that. But we're fulfilling the need for girls to know that they can use their voices, not only for systemic changes, but for those local changes, the local catalytic changes. And it's so easy to be discouraged when you don't see leaders that look like you. With Spark Change, we can address those inequalities. We're going to use girls from the community to inspire others. It's going to be facilitated by women of color.
Through education and community engagement, our children learn the importance of activism and service. They also learn that they have the right to advocate for themselves, and they understand the power of their voice. As we touch that, those many lives, they create a movement for their community, for female empowerment, and that will have an immeasurable difference going forward.
We know that this kind of work can change a teenager's life. We must put the voices of Black and Brown girls at the center of the solutions to community problems.
Girls of color have long been ready to become effective and impactful leaders in their communities and to have a say in the policies and practices that directly affect them. The time is now to provide Black and Brown girls with a space in which they can see what they want to be in the world.
We are prepared to spark change. This grant from Impact Austin will directly impact 135 girls with positive racial and gender identity and increase their belief in their ability and their skills to change the world.
So much to our two panelists, and we will be announcing the 2020 Social Innovation Grant in just a little bit. Before that, let's hear an update from Mimi Stiles on the Innocence Initiative, the 2019 Social Innovation Grant Community Partner. Mimi Stiles is the Executive Director of Measure. She's also an Impact Austin member, class of 2020, and a member of the Social Innovation Grant Review Committee. Mimi recently said, "I encourage other women to join Impact Austin because philanthropy is a needed component of anti-racism." It is needed for the unlearning and relearning process in addressing social issues while empowering the individuals at the center of mistreatment. Thank you for leading and inspiring us, and here's a video update on the Innocence Initiative followed by Mimi live.
It's just so important to realize that when you protect Black girls, you empower them.
About one year ago, Measure brought together this amazing collaborative called the Innocence Initiative. It's Hearts to Heal, it's Community Advocacy and Healing Project, Girl Scouts of Central Texas, and Lone Star Justice Alliance to really make systemic change to protect Black girls. And we did that. Matter of fact, we did that in a big way.
I love the mission of Measure and everything that they're working towards, especially putting data behind the research that we're finding and knowing that a lot of the research doesn't reflect the communities that are impacted the most. As a Black woman, I know how much we need to support Black girls, and the only way we're going to get that done is by going into the communities that we want to serve, those communities that are often left behind.
The Travis County Girl Squad is a mentorship program aimed at supporting Black girls, Black girls that have been impacted negatively by COVID-19, Black girls that have faced incarceration, Black girls that have had a parent incarcerated, or just a Black girl that needs us. So what we do is that we've actually partnered these girls with other Black women in Austin for constant mentoring.
It's really personal when they give you a mentor and you get to like check in and talk. You feel more of a sense of like belonging when you know that there's other people with you, hearing you, and listening to you.
We said that we were going to do things like train 50 defense attorneys about adultification bias. We said that we are going to host a community event, bringing Black girls together and encouraging them to join Girl Scouts. We said that we were going to do a public awareness campaign. We said that we are going to create a policy document that really shows schools what it looks like in order to protect Black girls. We did all of that, plus more.
Five community-led trainings directly addressing adultification bias resulting in over 565 parents, teachers, and advocates attending, a 10-minute speaking opportunity at this year's Women's March, the creation of a printed comic book to empower Black girls, and the distribution of the comic book to over 15,000 Central Texas homes. We were also able to develop a six-part teaching video series about how to protect Black girls right now. We said we were going to do some school policy change. So on October 9th, our community-led research team released an 11-page policy document that presents 10 new policy recommendations to regional school districts, city councils, and to the state of Texas.
All of this happened because of the Innocence Initiative. All this happened, really, starting with Impact Austin.
Good evening. Woohoo, I can't help but shout. Thank you, thank you, thank you to Impact Austin. My name is Mimi Stiles, and I get to be the president and the founder of this amazing organization that's data-driven and community-led, Measure. I also get to be the 2019 Social Innovation Grant Curator of the Innocence Initiative alongside my incredible partners, Hearts to Heal, Community Advocacy and Healing Project, Lone Star Justice Alliance, the Girl Scouts of Central Texas. Let me first say that, again, like I am so incredibly humbled and grateful to the community of Impact Austin for not just listening, right, but also believing us, believing our stories, believing the narrative that we put forward, backed up through philanthropy. It's incredible. And now's the day. Let's get a little serious here. Nearly 80% of pregnancy-related deaths in Texas could have been prevented. That's according to a 2018 report from the State Department of Health Services. This finding underscores a maternal care crisis that is particularly concerning for Black and Brown people who are more likely to face challenges in accessing adequate pre- and postnatal care. Quite frankly, centuries of purposefully created and crafted legislation, including local laws that codified segregation and blocked access to city hospitals right here in Austin, and resources for Black birthing women have reinforced these disparities. Now, amid COVID-19, there's, there's an increased concern about the quality of care during and after birth for people of color, for Black and Brown women. With this context, I am crucially honored to present this year's Impact Austin's 2020 Social Innovation Grant winner. As a birthing Black mama myself, who's due next month, and as a teenager that was also a teenage mom, I've had both the opportunity to be a champion of this organization and receive direct support as a client. This is how our village works. And I'm incredibly proud that Impact Austin is doing the work so that this village, our village, can be sustained. So please help me congratulate the project, Black Mamas Reach, and the organizing collaborative, Black Mamas ATX, Austin Regional Clinic, People's Community Clinic, and Maynor ISD on winning this year's grant. Now, let's hear a few words from the Director of Black Mamas ATX, Nikinia Wilson.
Thank you, Mimi. I am so excited to join each and every one of you all tonight. Black Mamas ATX is so honored to join the ranks of so many impactful, Impact Austin partners doing great work in Central Texas like Measure, and to share the stage with the Spark Girls Project as a 2020 Social Innovation Grant finalist. As a given circle of women, each of you understand how sacred the experience of pregnancy and childbirth is. With your support, Black Mamas Reach will have the opportunity to do work that is truly creative and innovative by joining forces with private and managed care organizations and the local school district with the support of city government. I would like to thank Black Mamas ATX Board, staff, and all of the Black Mamas that allow us to serve them during one of their most vulnerable times in life. Thank you to all of my colleagues who worked with me to imagine the Black Mamas Reach Maynor project, with special thanks to Austin Regional Clinic, People's Community Clinic, Maynor ISD, and the City of Maynor. Sister Circles, Midwifery Clinics, doula services, psychotherapy, and case management, all free, irregardless of income or insurance status, will be tailored and concentrated to serve women before, during, and after childbirth in Maynor, and will impact multiple generations of Black women and girls. Thank you, Impact Austin, for your trust and our power to do this important work.
Thank you so much, Nikinia. We are so thrilled to partner with you, and welcome to the family. I know that we're honored, we're really honored to support your work. And definitely check out the chat. You've got a bunch of fans and champions already in our Impact Austin family. So thank you so much. Up next, I get to do a couple of other fun announcements, like the Committee of the Year Award and also the Val Kirk Above and Beyond Award. Next slide. The Committee of the Year Award will go to, it's the highest honor Impact Austin bestows annually on one committee whose contribution of time, talent, fundamentally and substantially strengthens and improves the organization. And for this year, because it has been a huge year for this committee, I would like to honor, next slide, the Grants Leadership Committee. Next slide. These women listed here have given hours and hours of time, talent, and energy to pivot to online grant making, right on the heels of doing a grants management software transfer. These have been women who have been deeply invested in some of the updates that we discussed tonight. And then next slide, I'd also like to give a huge shout out to all the GRC co-chairs, the Grant Review Committee co-chairs from this year. Y'all have done an incredible job stewarding all of our members and volunteers during times of social distance. So the next, the next award, next slide, is going to go to, it's, again, it's the namesake, it's Val Kirk who received this award last year, and it's the Above and Beyond Award. And it's the highest honor Impact Austin bestows annually to one volunteer whose contribution of time and talent fundamentally and substantially strengthens and improves our organization. And big drum roll, the next slide. This year's honoree is the one and only Judy McCarthy, class of 2017. Next slide. Judy is our marketing committee co-chair, our social media manager, and also she is a hero to all. Thank you so much, Judy. You've done an incredible job with our organization this year, and people know who we are because of you. So thank you so much for all of your work. Very well-deserved honor. So we talked a lot about what's new, and I have a few other, a few other things just to talk about this evening of what else is new with Impact Austin, and that's year-round membership recruitment, our monthly payment plans in two grant cycles. In September 2020, the Impact Austin Board approved the following changes to support a new model of year-round recruitment, introduction of a monthly payment option in grant awards, all facilitated with the same trust-based mindset that we apply to our new grant-making processes. Members have full participation privileges, and you become a member as soon as payment is initiated, either by setting up monthly payments or by paying the annual payment in full. If you're a member, you get to vote. Immediate participation will make year-round recruiting and onboarding more effective, inclusive, and welcoming. There will still be a membership deadline for voting, which is an administrative necessity, but it'll be moved just days before voting on grant commences. Members need to have made their annual payment or initiated monthly payments prior to the deadline in order to be eligible to vote. All members will be eligible for two Grant Review Committee cycles, no matter when they join. New members will be eligible for the next two GRC cycles, and renewing members will be eligible for an additional two GRC cycles consistent with the full year of paid membership. Impact Austin will now offer two grant cycles per year, in the spring and in the fall. Grant dollar amounts will be determined by dividing the grant portion of membership dues 50/50 into two grant pools, the spring grant pool and the fall grant pool. Because members will pay dues at different times during the year, and because some will pay annually and others monthly, having two grant cycles will ensure that the grant amounts across the year will be balanced. For Spring 2021 awards will be the community and education grants, and the grant amounts will be determined at the end of this calendar year on December 31st. So as we continue to fundraise for Impact Austin's community partners, this is a friendly reminder to this is a friendly reminder to get your gifts in today on our website, impactaustin.org. Renew your membership and make your donation by December 31st to ensure that your dollars go out to our 2021 community partners. For our Fall 2020 Awards, the Equity Grant and the Health and Well-Being Grant, the grant awards will be determined at the end of our fiscal year, which is on June 30th. All of this is detailed on our website at impactaustin.org. And it's just my way of saying that membership recruitment is now an inclusive year-round practice, and there's never a bad time to join Impact Austin. So I have a few more announcements before we wrap up this evening. This is my reminder to members, just to quickly, to fill out your member survey. I'd also like to invite everyone to our Collective Giving Tuesday event. That'll be an event on Facebook Live at 9:00 AM. We'll be hearing more from our members about their Impact Austin stories. Next slide. So that is our beautiful board chair, Susan Palumbo. And Susan is modeling a little selfie card that we sent to all members in the mail with a... So make sure to send us a picture with that card, the Give Like a Woman card, and we will send a little grab bag to you in the mail. We have some masks with little daisies on them, as well as some very fun earrings that you can wear on Zoom that are big daisies. Thank you very much to Stephanie Kavanaugh for the very creative and lovely donation. Next slide. Make sure to save the date. The next Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee meeting is December 8th at 6:30 PM. We'd love for you to get involved with the DEI Committee and come learn more about how to participate in their programming. Next slide. And save the date for Discovery Day. So usually Discovery Day annually is a half-day of learning where we get to know more about community needs and some of our community partners. And this year, rather than doing a whole day on Zoom, we're going to be separating out into different modules and different webinars our Discovery Day programming. And it's going to be across January 4th to February 12th. So during that six-week period, we'll be calling them Discovery Days. So session topics will include Impact Austin 101, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, Discovering the Issues Facing Central Texas, and Philanthropy Education. They'll be broken out into different tracks, and make sure to check out our website for more information soon. And so now, I would love for those, I thank everyone so much for coming, first of all. Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations to our awardee. Thanks again to our panelists, Mita, Pia, and Dimple for the fantastic discussion on trust-based philanthropy. And we'd love to stick around and chat with you after. So if you are interested, check out the chat bar right now, and we can take you into a different Zoom, a different Zoom meeting. We'll have breakout rooms. You can stick around and chat with fellow Impact Austin women. Thank you again for tonight's co-chair, Lauren Lewis. Thank you to Impact Austin's amazing office manager, Nicole Genovese. And thanks to all the people who produced this event, the Advancement Committee, Marketing Committee, Social Innovation Grant Committee. And thank you again to our media team, C2C Media. So have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thanks again. And check the chat for the link to go over and do some little Zoom hangouts.